We're calling to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the El Segundo City Council. And we're really honored to have Boy Scout Troop 267 here tonight. Thank you for being here, gentlemen and ladies. I don't know if you have any ladies in the troop today, but thank you. And so we're going to start with, we're all going to rise. We're going to have the invocation and then we're going to have the scouts lead us in colors and the pledge. Does that sound right, Mr. Carey? Excellent. Okay, all please rise.
Please join me in a moment of prayer. Oh God, as we prepare for tonight's work, we pause to give thanks and ask for your guidance. We thank you for the love of our families, for the fellowship we enjoy with friends and neighbors and for this community. We pray for guidance for those who serve as council members, for Mayor Boiles, Mayor Protem Purstuck, and council members Bran, Nicole, and Pimentel. Renew their energy and help them as they make decisions. We give thanks for all whose work has made this meeting possible and for those who are here to take part. May this time together promote the well-being and safety of all who live and work in this community. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Carlisle, United Methodist Church.
Color guard attention. Color guard advance. Would you all join me in the pledge of allegiance? On my mark. Three, two, one, go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Two. Color guard salute. Two. Color guard dismissed.
Well done, Troop 267. Thank you for your leadership. All right, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Nicole?
Here.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Here.
Councilmember Bran?
Present.
Mayor Protem Purstuck?
Here.
And Mayor Boiles?
Here. Now is the time and place for public communications. Please limit to five minutes. State your name and if you'd like your address, please.
My name is Michael Bell. I'm with El Segundo Rotary. I want to invite everybody to this year's movie in the park. It'll be August 3rd. And this year, we're showing Spider-Man. So I just wanted to let everybody know, it's a great event, lots to do, and we always have a great turnout. And we really do appreciate everything the city does to help us support this event. See you there.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Great event.
Thanks so much.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Ryan Baldino, East Palm Avenue. I'm curious if anyone's going to call item C3 about the D.R. Horton project? If not, I have a few quick comments to make now. If it's polled, I can make those at that time.
I'll be polling it.
Thank you, Mr. Bran. And then there'll be a hearing on the art. There'll be a public hearing for that?
Yes.
Okay. I'll wait. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baldino. Looks like that's it. Any comments from City Council? Oh yeah, sorry, please. Yeah.
Hi, my name is Leila Shu. I live on 400 Block Concord Street in El Segundo. I'm talking about the short-term rental, which is not the issue today. We had a meeting two weeks ago, it was about two weeks ago, with the planning commission. And they want to approve the, I mean, suggest to you guys that we should have the short-term rental here in El Segundo. I felt that they were not prepared. Actually, they were ill-prepared. They didn't know, I mean, some of the people in that group didn't know what's the difference between the short-term rental and house sharing or home sharing. I think a lot of residents don't know what's going on in El Segundo. So therefore, I'm asking if this could be, the voting could be postponed and not having it on August. I think that's when you guys are going to vote for this. Because nobody's in town. Everybody's on vacation before school starts. So I find it very difficult to understand that we would vote something so important that will affect the city so much and so gravely, and we would, you guys would vote on a time when nobody's around. I think that the residents of El Segundo should decide if we have short-term rental here. Santa Monica has, Santa Monica, Manhattan Beach, they all said no to short-term rentals because they saw what's happening to the city. Our town is much smaller. We talk about sortages of homes and housing. Now, a lot of these homes, apartments, condominiums, ADUs go to short-term rentals. So how do you explain, I mean, it's very simple to see the effect of short-term rentals. It's going to take a lot of housing out of the market. A lot of these owners don't live in the city. It's a big business. A lot of these guys have three, there's one guy who has one short-term rental here, has 42 listings. There's a lot of families could live in there. I like to see families moving in. We are trying to get businesses coming in here, but there's no homes because they go to short-term rentals. And I don't see that city will benefit one way or the other. I think it's going to be very, very expensive. We're going through some, I'm not going to talk about the party houses, but anyways, some difficult times with those who are not obeying the rules and regulations. And you guys can have any rules you want, but how are you going to, how are you going to check that somebody's going to obey they and go by the rules? Impossible. It's going to be so, it's going to bankrupt the city. And then on top of that, you have very unhappy neighbors. I don't want to live surrounded by short-term rentals. I don't know anybody. People come and go. That's not fun. I lived here over 25 years. I know all my neighbors. I love this city. I love my neighbors to have parties. I'm not against parties or anything like that. Little noise, who cares? But when it comes from people who come only for that purpose here, they do not come to visit El Segundo. Most of these short-term rentals, people who do that here in this town, and it's a lot, they advertise it's a great place to stay. You can go to Manhattan Beach, you can go to Santa Monica, Disneyland. So why do we have to be at the hotel service? There's a lot of hotels here, and I'm really surprised that they are not getting involved in here. So I hope we have some kind of resolution and hopefully the residents who live here have some say. What else was here? That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Shu.
As leader of Troop 267, I'd like to thank you for letting us do your flag ceremony today.
Great job, Mr. Lipsy. Is that it for public communications? Yes, looks like it. Mr. Mitnick?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm not quite sure how you do follow-up, but we'll follow up with that last speaker. I'll have Leanna go out and talk to her, and we'll make sure we keep her in the loop and informed as to when the item comes back to City Council.
Thank you, sir. All right, any council comments on the public communications? Okay, moving along here, we've got item A, approve order of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Okay. And actually, come to think of it, Scott, you wanted to pull item nine, which is a public hearing anyway. Would that be okay to move it up?
Number 10.
Okay, so for this, it's if you're going to move something out of order. Not that you're going to pull something, but if you're going to move it out of order.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, I think.
So I think- So can we actually move item 10?
Mr. Mitnick wanted to move number 13 to under number 11, since the chief was going to be giving a presentation anyways, just to do them both at the same time. But check with-
Okay. Is that right, Mr. Mitnick?
Yes.
Okay. So we need a motion on that. Moving item 13 under item 11.
So moved.
All right. Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Chris did. Five zero.
And you want to move 10 up?
Yeah, that's what I'm getting to next, which is, do we want to move item 10 and nine up, actually? Because we have people in the audience on both items. Council, okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Item nine and 10, moving them up to be before consent. Okay?
Wait, so are we going to move all nine again?
Yes, we do.
Make a motion to move items nine and 10 to before the consent calendar. Consent to Jenna.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right?
No.
Okay. Four one. All right, now we've got B, consideration of a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Okay, item nine. I've got a script because this is a public hearing. This is the time and place here to fix for a public hearing. Consideration of possible action regarding approving an amendment to the general plan and zoning ordinance to change the site's land use and zoning designations from commercial center to urban mixed-use south. Approve a 10-year development agreement, certify an environmental, excuse me, impact report, and adopt statement of overriding considerations. The project site is located at 2021 Rosecrans Avenue, El Segundo, California, 90245.
Mine says 2041 Rosecrans.
Mine says 2021. Is that the right address?
Okay, so that is a clerical, it is to read 2021. 2041 was a clerical mistake.
Okay, so I got it right. Thanks. City Clerk, was proper notice of the hearing given in a timely manner?
Yes, it was.
Okay. City Clerk, has any written communication been received regarding this public hearing?
Not to our office.
Counsel, the applicant has requested that this be continued to the first regular meeting, Council's first regular meeting in August.
Thank you. Do we still need to read, I assume we still need to read the clerk, your part was written communication, has it been received by the City Clerk's office?
Yes.
Thanks. Okay. May I have a motion to continue the public hearing at the applicant's request?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Public hearing will be continued to the August 6, 2019, regular City Council meeting per the applicant's request. And I know, Mr. Baldino, you had, no, it's the next one, sorry. My apologies. Okay. All right, moving on to item 10. This is the time and place here to fix for a public hearing. Consideration of possible action regarding the introduction of an ordinance amending Title III of the El Segundo Municipal Code to establish a cultural development fund and cultural development fee, otherwise known as a percent for arts fee. The proposed ordinance is exempt from further environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act, California Public Resources Code 21,000, SEQA, and SEQA Guidelines 14 California Code of Regulations 15,000 at SEA, because it can be seen with certainty that there's no possibility that the proposed ordinance will have a significant effect on the environment. Fiscal impact approximately $1 million in fee revenues per year. City Clerk, was proper notice of the hearing given in a timely manner?
Yes, it was.
Okay. City Clerk, has any written communication been received regarding this public hearing?
Yes, it has been.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open. Mr. Mitnick, who will make the presentation?
Our library director.
Thank you.
So, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight's presentation will be collaborative, so I'd like to introduce Jeff Kason, who is the Chair of our Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, to begin.
Well, good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. A few months ago, we made a presentation to you proposing the idea of a cultural development fund to support the arts and culture in El Segundo. The key message was that arts and culture are an important part of El Segundo's creative economy, which has a direct benefit to the city's economy at large. Since then, we had commissioned Beacon Economics to develop a creative economy report, which they released. And this report showed just how significant our city's creative economy really is. We were all delighted to see that $3.5 billion of our economy can be attributed to creative businesses. Beacon's assessment recommended creating a cultural development fund that would help grow our creative economy. This fund would be an additional source of revenue to help improve the quality of life in our city, which in turn would attract new businesses and economic growth. Since we last presented to the council, we had shared the cultural development fund idea with many city groups, committees, and civic leaders. They all liked the idea, but they, like you, wanted to know more about it and how this would really work. And so that's why we're here today. I'd like to invite Melissa McCollum, Library Director for the City of El Segundo, to share in more detail about how this proposed fund would work.
So as a reminder, benefits of the plan are many, including creating additional public access to the arts, helping drive tourism and revenue to local businesses, contributing toward realizing cultural equity and inclusion, and creating opportunities for artists and art organizations in the community. The Arts and Culture Advisory Committee recommends a budget of $1 million annually for six goals: to artistically enhance already budgeted capital improvement projects; to advocate for art and cultural events on weekends to increase hotel occupancies; to permeate the city with public art and programs to create a comprehensive community identity; to award local excellence in commercial beautification; to stimulate a higher level of art engagement in schools and civic organizations; and contribute to achieving the city enjoyable, which is a term that's coined by Michael Kreske. A 1% cultural development fee would equate to approximately $1 million in revenue for public arts and programming each year in El Segundo. So today, we plan to cover the following: the proposed cultural development fund ordinance; administration of the cultural development fund; expectations for onsite developer projects; construction fee comparisons; and also share sample budgets, inspiration from other cities, and the committee's recommended measures for success. So the committee's proposal for a cultural development fee has evolved based on feedback from stakeholders. The current proposal requires a 1% contribution for commercial and industrial development projects with a building valuation of $500,000 or more. The largest change to the proposal is a new recommendation from the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee to add a $100,000 project cap, and that's in response to feedback from the Chamber of Commerce's Government Affairs Committee. The fee would apply to new construction and remodels. And for projects with $7.5 million valuation and less, the fee would be paid into a cultural development fund. For projects valued at more than seven and a half million, developers would also have the option of developing a project onsite. Exemptions for the fee would include nonprofit organizations, rehabilitation work for seismic safety, or to comply with governmental mandates, which would include Americans with Disabilities Act, and repair to an existing building that has been partially or completely destroyed by fire or natural disaster. We did add some extra charts to give you a little bit more background about how we came up with those recommendations. You may recall from the staff report that there was a spreadsheet that was put together by the LA County Arts Commission that talked about the choices that 46 municipalities made, including 36 within LA County. They had three basic, large decisions to make. One, where would the fee kick in? What would the fee, what percentage would that be? And then the third, would the fee apply to residential in addition to commercial and industrial? So we took each of those issues. For building valuation, again, within the 46 jurisdictions, 32 or 70% chose a threshold of $500,000 or lower. So that's why we went with the $500,000 recommendation. There are a few cities that have a higher threshold, for example, San Diego, as well as a few cities near the Bay Area. In terms of the percent allotment, the kind of common name for a fee is percent for arts, and that's because the standard really is that 1%. You can see that 59% have 1% out of those 46 jurisdictions, and that's what we decided to recommend as well. Some have lower, some have a little bit higher. There's also a few cities that use a tiered approach that ranges from about .5 to 2%. And finally, residential development, and this is where we differed from the norm. Most of the municipalities do apply the fee to residential as well, usually only for multi-unit properties. You can see that five units or more is the most popular option. We had many, many conversations about this, however, and because of the scarcity of housing in El Segundo and the price, and the fact that many of the committee members know people that have been priced out or have had, you know, descendants that have been priced out of El Segundo, they did not want to make the recommendation to apply the fee to residential at this time. Well, at all. But I would like to share that in our conversations with both EDAC and the Chamber of Commerce, there are differences of opinion out there. There are some people who think it should be applied to residential, either at the 1% fee or a flat fee even as low as $25 per project, just to show the investment in public art is something that everybody should commit to. So I wanted to share that feedback as well. We also looked at some other options that the municipalities made. Adding a cap, a project cap, as we're calling it, or a fee cap, is not the norm, but there were five cities that did that, and they ranged from $20,000 to $750,000 in Redondo. There were also some decisions made to have different percentages based on if communities or if developers were paying into the in-lu fee or doing their own project onsite. But it is interesting because different choices were made by different communities. It was sometimes higher for one than the other. This is, though, where we did see the model of the cap, and that was really, the $100,000 really came out of, we went to the Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Meeting twice, and it really came from, as you can also see in their letter, the concern about the impact of the fee on budgets, both for current businesses and potentially new businesses. However, if you also read the letter, you'll see that they also believe in the value of public art and programming. And I think the fact that they're taking a neutral position rather than opposing it when it is a fee and is additional regulation is, shows how thoughtful that they were about considering the proposal. And in the same way, the Arts and Culture Committee was really thoughtful also. They don't want to go after just every dollar they can. I think they really are looking for what the right balance is for this community. And with that goal of trying to get $1 million, they can still get pretty close to that with the $100,000 cap. So that's kind of the thinking behind, again, these recommendations. So hopefully that background is helpful, and we can talk more, of course. In terms of administration of the fund, the recommendation is that there will be a special expenditure fund created that would be administered by the Library Services Department in coordination with finance and public works and planning in the city attorney's office. Coordination is going to be essential. The annual budget, the proposal is that the Arts and Culture Committee would come to you during the regular budget process with recommendations about how to use it each year for your approval. Standard city approval limits would apply, so any expenditure over $50,000 would need to be approved by you directly. And then the other significant piece of feedback or questions that we got, again, primarily through EDAC and the Chamber of Commerce, were, was questions about the makeup of the Arts and Culture Committee. And since you appoint them, of course, you know, but just for the community's sake, we'll just remind that all of those appointments are by the City Council for terms of three years. There's definitely a variety of art disciplines represented in the makeup of that committee, but there is also an attorney, there's a founder of a nonprofit, there is a small business owner, et cetera. So there is a variety of experience and expertise. Also, in the chamber's letter, you'll see that if the fund does move forward, that they would really like to see representation from both small and large business. At EDAC, we also heard that they would love to have a developer be a part of the committee in order to help make decisions about the expenditures. And I want to tell you, the membership of the Arts and Culture Committee is very supportive of both of those ideas. Uh-oh. There we go. So in addition to the benefits that were mentioned previously, development-commissioned works of art can improve employee and tenant working environments, they can create a unique look or landmark feature for the project, they can demonstrate a larger civic commitment, and they can translate into higher rents and a more desirable office location. The review process for developer projects would be collaborative with the goal of developing the very best possible art, both for the project but also for the community at large. The art must be an integral part of the development project, and the artist should be included as a member of the project design team. Approval would be a two-step process, with the artist and the art plan being presented to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for an approval recommendation, and then final review and approval by city staff would be needed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Maintenance of the art would be the responsibility of the developer and its successors for the lifetime of the building or the length of time as approved by the city. So again, we did hear some concern regarding the impact of cultural development fee for budgets for businesses in town. Sam Lee from Planning and Building Safety compared El Segundo's current construction fees to construction fees in neighboring communities, and found that they're much, much lower. I think he's going to come up to talk about, are you ready, Sam? Talk about them in a little bit more detail, but please also keep in mind that these numbers do not reflect the 1% fee that most of the communities also have in place.
So when the committee was considering this new fee, they became aware that the Building and Safety Department had lowered our fees last year at this time. And so they asked me to take a look at, you know, how much the fees were lowered and how much of an impact that may have to the new fees that they want to get approval for. So the chart C shows that these are only fees based on half a million dollars to $10 million. And on average, the fees were lowered by 34 to 43%. And the bottom line shows the percentage of the valuation. About half a million is about 1.2%, and for $10 million, it's about 5.56%. Okay. So the next screen is, they said, okay, those are our new fees. How do they compare to cities surrounding us and cities that we compete with? So we looked at City of LA, we looked at Manhattan Beach, we also looked at Glendale, which is a little bit further away, but we chose them because they were one of the cities that won the most business-friendly award, I think right after we did. We also looked at Culver City and Torrance, and you can see by the numbers, we're extremely lower compared to those other cities. The last screen shows how our fee, no, it's not. So the last screen shows how our fees compare to those average of those other cities. And they range from, anywhere from 49 to 66% lower compared to those cities. That's it.
So this is a sample annual budget, and it is, it is rough because it obviously would depend on how many projects happen in a certain year and how many developers decide to do a project onsite versus pay into the fund. But what the Arts and Culture Committee wanted to share was these are the categories that they would like to see supported. So in addition to developer projects, a large percentage would be used to artistically enhance already budgeted capital projects. They'd like to do one to two significant permanent art pieces per year. Community experiences would be the area where you would be able to sponsor, you know, music, music performances, speaker series, author talks, more of the programming piece of the plan. And grants, that the committee would like to be able to provide grants to both local artists and art organizations. There's a lot of wonderful work already being done in El Segundo, and it's important to continue to support that as well. These are example of a few projects that are currently underway or have been recently completed. In the top left is the site for the Gateway Project, the entrance to El Segundo at Main and Imperial. $150,000 project for signage. It's a model that if it's successful, would likely be replicated in other entries to El Segundo as well. The top middle is a project by artist Rebecca Lowry, $100,000 project proposed for outside of City Hall. It incorporates one of the oldest maps from El Segundo, encourages people to think about all of the changes that have happened in the last 100 years. In the middle is the recent mural by Nanabushakon in the library. It was a project, those $8,500. On the left- mural by Nanabushakon in the library. It was a project that was $8,500. On the left is from our Living Library, a partnership with Osmo and the library, just again as a reminder that this could support programming in addition to the public art. And with consistent funding, just the potential of how much more could be done. Some sample art budgets. We talked about the Gateway Project and Rebecca Lowry's proposal. The renovation of the teen center would be another opportunity to do one in town. Neighboring communities, Inglewood just recently finished a large project for their senior center that cost $200,000. Manhattan Beach has a project out right now for $250,000 for their City Hall. Malibu supports a wonderful speaker series in partnership with LA County Public Library every year that cost about $100,000. But not all of the price tags are huge. Pasadena recently put out a call for proposals for six mini-grants at $750. We were really excited about that, to activate different parts of town, encourage their residents and visitors and business people to participate in art and play on a particular So we were really inspired by the many cities that have had percent for arts programs in place for years, as you can see, some even for decades. The committee looked really closely at West Hollywood and Culver City's policies and procedures in particular as they have very impactful public art programs. And will continue to look at professional best practices if a culture development fund is approved and were directed to bring back an administrative manual for your approval. Again, please note that at least 36 municipalities in LA County have enacted percent for arts ordinances. There is a proposal to add the fee for unincorporated areas of LA County. It was recently moved forward by the Los Angeles County Department of Regional Planning and is scheduled to be considered by Board of Supervisors next Tuesday. Many northern California cities have also have percent for arts programs. They've had them for years. I know our new city manager has been particularly impressed by the program in Brea, which has been in place since the 70s. But we found that Philadelphia was the first city to enact a program and that was way back in 1959. So Vice Chair of the Arts and Cultural Advisory Committee, Ava Sweeney, is here to speak more about the committee's inspiration.
So it's that one, but directed that way.
Yeah, we picked a couple of images to give you an idea of what can be all done with it. So on the upper left, you will see, it's called Urban Lights, is the most visited and photographed public art project right in front of Lagma in Southern California. So that has brought a lot of tourism to the city of Los Angeles. Then next to it, you see a camouflaged electrical box, which is really a public favorite. It's not very expensive to do that. Culver City started a project where they took a photo of what's behind the box so that it totally disappears. So that's a very easy project. We can immediately implement and beautify Main Street. Then we picked two examples. You see the shading device and the bench. It's a typical example where you usually have a public works installation, but by hiring an artist, you make it more interesting and more inspiring and actually more fun and engaging. And then on the lower-left side, you see a sculpture. It's actually a children's book character. It's called Nuffle Bunny. In New York, they created multiple bronze sculptures depicting children's books' characters so that the younger people get encouraged to read and meet their favorite characters and photo op. And, oops. And then we also, you know, there are different projects. There may be more whimsical sculptures which can be climbed on for kids. And then on the right side, upper-right side, it's a project in Japan which was very successful. Kids were starting to work with an artist to draw details on like sidewalks, which then led to a major plaza. You know, I could see that here on our city plaza where an artist guides them to create a beautiful floor mural, which is very simple to implement. And then we see like a great music festival, and I think it's really due that there is a TEDx El Segundo, which would bring a lot of PR and publicity and knowledge to the city.
Well, as you know, any endeavor is only a success if you can measure its results and be able to use that data for future decision-making. So here are seven key areas by which we will measure the success of a cultural development fund. The first is community satisfaction. We want to improve the quality of life for El Segundo residents, to champion art, events, beautification, and civic improvements that preserve our unique identity and make people proud to be a part of this amazing community. Number two is partner satisfaction, that our partner businesses will be true partners. We want these improvements, upgrades, to support their quality of work-life and to help them support their brand objectives as businesses. We are working together to create an environment that is exciting for their employees, for their clients, and making El Segundo the preferred place to do business here in Los Angeles. Number three, we measure our success by our growth and competitiveness, that El Segundo is increasingly competitive in attracting innovative companies. And particularly now as this Silicon Beach movement is happening in our area, that El Segundo would not just be a participant, but would be a leading community in Silicon Beach, and we would have that cultural environment that would support that. Fourth, we want to expand our creative economy, and we want to attract creative companies ranging from entertainment to digital media to creative technology and product design, growing what is already a $3.5 billion chunk of our local economy. We want to help make El Segundo the hub for high-profile creative companies. Number five is El Segundo's image and our reputation. El Segundo is a thriving innovative community that attracts these creative companies, and we are this rare community for all of us who have spent some time here that is cool, it's beachy, it's family-oriented, it's intimate, and yet we still have the business and the economy and the reputation of a major metropolitan city. We want to burnish that reputation within the state of California and even the nation as one of the best cities in which to live and work. And we want to fuel our destination marketing and cultural tourism efforts by helping to define the narrative of our community, putting visuals to the story of what El Segundo is all about, and creating a reason for people to visit and see how just amazing this city is. Sixth, we want to measure our success by our artistic achievement. There are many prolific artists that reside here in the South Bay, and we have an opportunity to showcase their work. Moreover, we look forward to bringing nationally-recognized art into our community and making a real impact in public art and in cultural engagement. And then finally, seventh, is financial management. City leadership has demonstrated a commitment to sound fiscal management, and this value is shared among our arts leadership as well. This additional source of revenue would help alleviate some of the city's financial expenditures for community events and artistic initiatives, prioritizing fiscal health. But meanwhile, we would be investing this new source of resources to grow the creative economy in El Segundo, bringing in new companies, increasing spending in our local economy, and driving cultural tourism that supports our existing businesses. So to conclude, El Segundo, as we all know, is an absolutely amazing community. The entire Arts and Culture Advisory Committee shares the city's vision to grow our economy and attract new businesses while at the same time investing in the quality of life for our residents, so that the charm and the essence of El Segundo continues to flourish. The Cultural Development Fund will allow us to meet these objectives, investing in both sides of our economy, so that El Segundo continues to be one of the best places to live and work in the country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kason. All right, public hearing is now, that's it for presentation, right? Thank you. A public hearing is now open for public input. Let's see, Mr. Baldino approaching the mic.
Hi, Ryan Baldino on Palm Avenue. I am not speaking behalf of any members of the Planning Commission, but I did learn about this at a Planning Commission meeting, and these are my concerns and comments about it. Projects this size, commercial projects are only going to happen east of PCH. Those projects are already paying impact fees, fire, police, The development agreement is one of the few tools we have as a city to help get public benefits from individual projects and use those funds to whatever we need at that moment. D.R. Horton's here. They paid quite a bit in public development to redesign their fee. My concern is that once you tack on another arts fee, it's going to lessen our ability to be able to negotiate a public benefit the next time we have a big development agreement. And the idea of just tacking on these fees and creating money and to try to figure out what we're going to do after it, to me, is creating funding without an actual dedicated purpose. And in closing, I think if we're going to start raising a million dollars in fees, I'd like that money to go to pensions, because that is the fundamentally biggest crisis this city is facing. Now, I hate to be negative, but those are my concerns. I just wanted to raise it at the public forum so you guys can talk about it. And I do want to thank the Cultural Committee just for having the gumption to bring something like this forward. I always encourage people to volunteer and get involved. I know it takes a lot of time and a lot of effort to do that, and I'm just so pleased when people get together and make something happen. So those are the kind of concerns I saw with it. I just think a million bucks a year is a substantial amount of money to be raised to go to a subcommittee for the city council. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baldino. Any other public communication? Okay, Council, I'm sure you guys have questions or thoughts?
I had a question for Sam. Sam, when Melissa was speaking, she mentioned step one and step two. And step two being that final review and approval of the city staff is needed prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And I just started thinking logistically from a building standpoint and wanting to get the tenants in, and I don't know if necessarily art going in is going to be able to be done during the dirty work, per se? And it would likely be done after tenants are moving in and things like that?
Yeah, so you're absolutely right, Scott. And what would probably happen in some cases where there's some delay in getting the art approved through the commission or through the artist or whatnot, we'll probably end up issuing a temporary certificate of occupancy, which we do very often, when all the life safety elements of the building have been completed. But if landscaping or art or something like that is left over, we'll put a temporary certificate of occupancy for a certain period of time, 90 days, six months, and we specifically stipulate what are the conditions that are left to do in the building.
Perfect. Thank you.
I have some questions. First off, Mark, are we able to use any development impact fees for other purposes such as paying down capital, you know, putting money aside for capital projects, paying down pensions?
No. The impact fees for the, actually the city doesn't have a lot of impact fees, but the extent you do, they have to go to the designated purpose that they're established for. They can't be used for pensions.
You know, I'm saying, help me understand why they're okay to be used for arts, but they're not okay. I heard other impact fees and why, you know, Hawthorne, etc.
Well, for example, you often have water capital connection fees, which are to help improve the water system. Collect those funds from developers. You can upgrade the size pipe so that they can carry the water necessary to get to the development. Those are very specific. The government code has very specific requirements for impact fees. Now, there is an exception of sorts for these arts fees, and it's been created by law, that it's not as tight as the other impact fees.
Thanks. What, no, I think we have to keep the public hearing open and continue comment now, don't we? Okay. Are there any public comments? All right, we'll close public hearing. I have a motion to close public hearing, actually.
So moved.
Okay, it was second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. The $500,000, Sam, that's being exempted, you know, the threshold of $500,000. Does that mean that if I'm building a million-dollar project, the first $500,000 is not counted in my development fee, or does it just mean that that's the limit?
Yeah, I don't think that's what it means. I think what it means is projects that are under half a million dollars will not be assessed the art fee, but all projects over half a million dollars will be assessed for the entire amount.
Okay, that doesn't seem equitable to me. But, Mark, I'm wondering how, we reduced our fees because we did a cost-based accounting method to find out what our fully burden rates are, right? And how can we be so much lower than these other cities? I mean, have they just not done that audit in a long time? Because I can't understand how we would be that much lower.
The fees that Sam Lee are talking about are the building permit fees. That's the cost of, when you pull a permit to construct a building, the cost associated with staff and consultants to review those plans, go out and inspect the construction work and to get it done.
How can we be either more efficient or less expensive than LA, Santa Monica, West Hollywood, Culver City, Beverly Hills, makes, not logical.
You'll have to ask Sam that question.
Do you have an answer on that, Mr. Lee?
Yeah, I've actually been thinking about this a little bit since the analysis started to happen. And I think maybe the best way I can describe that is, we have a unique city. We have a unique city because if you have a small city, maybe a city that does a lot of residential projects and whatnot, then you have a building and safety staff that caters to that. So you have a small staff, but you have a small amount of work. You know, you don't really build too many homes and whatnot. And you see some communities like that near us, maybe the community in PV and whatnot. And then you have large cities like LA City. I would say Beverly Hills is about a medium-sized city. And those cities have a building and safety staff that's much larger, because they deal with mid-rise buildings, large commercial projects, high-rise buildings. As such, their staffing level is very large to be able to support it.
So they're way less efficient. They have more staff and they get less done with the same staff?
So in our city, I think, our city is very unique because we're a small city, but we have large projects, right? So our staffing level is, we staff to the basic levels of what we do behind us with consultants. And I think that model, I think is a, I think it's the best economical way.
That makes sense because you're not fully burdened on that. Thank you. So then the other question wasn't clear to me. Is it only large projects can choose to do their own art, or are small projects allowed to choose their own art? Because I know from the Smoky Hollow specific plan, having worked with planning recently, there are a lot of mandates for community benefit that are subject to some interpretation, some of which includes
So the way we're dividing it is at a valuation of $7.5 million, and that is the same parameters that West Hollywood and Culver City use. So that equates to $75,000. If it's a project of a lower valuation, that money would be paid directly into the Culture Development Fund. If it's at $75,000 or more, then there's the choice of either paying into the fund or doing a project onsite.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. Okay, any comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk about the cap. So just the way, the $100,000 cap, I do have some concerns with it in that if a project is $20 million, it's $100,000. If a project is, you know, $5 million, it's $100,000. Like it's, whatever the calculation is. But if, if it actually allows people that are spending a lot more money on their development to not have to pay as much. And the other thing that really bothers me is the way it's structured is it's by project. So realistically, if a company submits, say they want to do a massive amount of remodel, they'll break it into smaller projects so that their fee is, or actually they could lump them together and their fee is a lot less. So it just, the way we put that cap on there makes it inequitable across the board. And I just, I just really, the cap is bothering me, or the $100,000 cap. So I'm not sure. And then the other thing is, is that it's, we treat remodels the same as we do new development. And I think maybe we have a cap on remodels, because one of the concerns that the companies brought up was if they're just going to resurface their driveway, that could be quite a bit of money, and they didn't want to have to pay this art development every time they decided to repave their driveways. Maybe we do a cap on remodel versus new development.
So if you're building in Smoky Hollow right now, the way I understand the code, the municipal code, you are required, if you want any variance, like maybe you want to go up in height, or you want to increase your FAR, you have to develop art. So then we would be saying, you're also going to pay a fee on top of that. What I struggle with is why are we mandating a fee as opposed to allowing people to make their own decisions when building their buildings? Let the market drive the decision. If you think you need art to get the right tenants in, then put up art to get the right tenants in, and let it happen organically. When we stood up this Arts and Culture Committee three years ago, we sat up here and said, we aren't going to ask for funds for this committee to use. and said, we aren't gonna ask for funds for this committee to use. We said that as a council. Granted, there are new members on the council now, but that was what we discussed. I would much prefer an incentive, a creative incentive for people to build art. Maybe they get more, maybe they get some additional variances. Or the projects that wanna do something huge like Raytheon right now, they're in what, second, third phase of their variance for their project, require them to do art in a very big and meaningful way because they're talking about unleashing market valuation of hundreds of millions of dollars. But instead, we're penalizing the small builders and developers with a fee. So, that's where I stand on it. Further, uh, council comments, Don?
Yeah, I'd like to agree with the comments that Carol mentioned about the cap. That troubles me also. Uh, I think the, uh, committee came up with that to placate or respond to the chambers' uh, comments, uh, but I don't think a cap's in order. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. Further council comments?
Do we have a sense, looking backward at projects over, what, either, either this past year or the year prior, what, what the total, uh, data dispersion of businesses liable for this? I mean, a, a little bit of the concern is, a number of the projects in Smoky Hollow or Main Street that we would like to incent to turn over would, would be some of the most heavily penalized, uh, cause they will likely hit the million to million dollar, or million to two million dollar revenue bandwidth. And is that of the one million dollar of theoretical revenue capture on this? Do we know, do we think the, the plurality of those will be large businesses, or do we think we will hit a significant number of small businesses? Do we have any idea, Sam, kind of historically, where these things fit into the, to the scatter plot?
I don't have the specifics, but, uh, maybe I can just kinda describe to you how we came up with the million dollars and, and the cutoff, and maybe that can kinda tell the story.
Yeah, please.
So, um, overall, um, on a, on an annual basis, there's roughly about two hundred million dollars of jobs, construction valuation in our city. And so we ran a report of several years, and we said, uh, you know, what percentage of those projects, or what are the projects that are over half a million? And we, we categorized those, and we looked at what the valuation of those projects were, and, um, it made up about a hundred million dollars. So then, if you take up all projects above half a million, they make up a hundred million, one percent gets you the million dollars.
But of those that are worth more than five hundred thousand in valuation, you don't have a sense of how many of those were seven fifty and how many were twenty million?
I have a report back there that I can take a quick look at, but, uh, maybe I can, I can answer that in a little, little bit?
Sure, no, absolutely.
Yeah.
Let me ask, this, this might be something, uh, for the city attorney. In terms of, you know, we saw the gateway projects up there, and some of these things are things that we're currently allocating out of the general fund for, that, that nominally might be capital improvements. Is there anything that bars a council from looking at this fund as it exists, as, as a separate segregated fund, and saying, well, we wanna move, allocate, reallocate money from that fund into the general, or take things off of the general fund budget and put into this that are already allocated? Whether it's the gateway, or a new sign outside the plunge, or whatever the case may be?
I'm gonna turn to David King in my office, who helped draft the language, but I think the issue's gonna be, does that fall within the definition of what is art?
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, for the council's reference, on page two fifty of your packet in the ordinance, in the middle of the page, we outlined what the fund fees could be used for. So as long as those projects include design, acquisition, commission, installation, improvement of artwork as defined, then it would qualify. But other infrastructure types of projects would probably not be considered artwork, and therefore would not be allowed, as, as the ordinance is presented now. We're trying to distinguish between artwork and other facility upgrades, basic infrastructure improvements.
Well, in a, in a real-world example, let's say, we, we sat here and talked through the park place expansion, or extension, which will have a very large rotary in the middle. Presumably, we will put something in the middle of that roundabout. Would that fall as a piece of art where we could allocate from this? Or is that something from the general fund that we need to allocate for, or go to Metro for, or whomever? Cause that's part of a, a large project.
Right. So it just depends on whether or not it would be considered artwork, the way that we've described it, which is an original creation of art, um, to be displayed outdoors. So, yes, if, if it was, fell within the definition of artwork.
Like we have a fountain in the middle of it, that fountain would be a, a piece of art, and that would be, we could use the funds.
Right, right. And the way that the ordinance is sort of envisioned is that, you know, the, the, the commission would be involved in that process. So yes, of course, you could, you gotta identify certain projects, and then, you know, maybe they solicit proposals, and then they present those to you for your consideration. So, but we do have, we do have some parameters on how the fees could be used, and that's just, um, because, to comply with state law.
And the administration of that fund, budgetary decisions over fifty thousand dollars still sit with the council?
Yes, absolutely. So the, the commission is involved in the process, but they're not making final decisions. So everything above fifty hu- fifty thousand dollars would always be approved by the city council.
Five, five city council people deciding what a piece of art is? That'll, remind me to be sick for that one. Are you kidding me? Sam, please.
Uh, on an average year, I would say there's about fifty to sixty projects that fall within that range. And about half are, um, in the range of half a million dollars to seven fifty, and the other half would be above seven fifty.
So fifty percent of the, the likely affected projects will be people doing something that's seven hundred fifty thousand dollars or less?
In between five hundred and seven fifty.
Uh, I, I would posit that that is not our target audience for who, that, that really burdens, uh, I mean, that, that burdens people that we really are seeking to do a lot of the, the things we hear on other pieces of revitalization. And I, and I don't know that that's necessarily, uh, the ideal group to target, uh, when we talk about people who are gonna be doing these mom and pop shops, um, that we'd like to see on, on Main Street. Uh, that does not mean that I'm necessarily, uh, wholly opposed to this. I think that Carol brings up a very good point about remodels and renovations. Uh, there are any number of projects that it is in all of our interests to see modernized continually, both for safety and environmental standards. I think likely in the next year, or, or the next two years, we'll see things from the environmental committee about a host of California compliant green building standards that will also add cost to people trying to do those same sized renovations. So I think we should be very cautious, uh, with how we look at this. I am in concept enormously in favor of the quality of life improvements, uh, and, and overall, uh, aesthetic and cultural benefit to having public art. I just am, I think, like, like some of us here, struggling if this is the right mechanism, or if we're targeting the right pop- population of work to get that done. I'll shut off my microphone for a minute.
Thank you. Councilman, Pam Tell. All right, Councilman Nickel, do you have any thoughts?
My thought is, it echoes much of what you guys have already discussed, but that five hundred thousand dollar threshold, I just think is too low. I think we need to go after the bigger fish. Um, I'm definitely in support of this fee. Commissioner Baldino's comments are, are well taken, I think. Over time, this is a fee that will be underwritten into these deals, and it'll just be expected, and any other negotiations within a development agreement can happen on top of this. I think it's just time that will have to go by, but point well made. But that threshold of five hundred thousand is far too low. If you scraped a lot in Smoky Hollow and wanted to build a new office building for your company, you're gonna spend two to two and a half million dollars, easy. After spending that, you, you're looking at another, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars to the art fee. You're not, you're not really gonna be able to do much art at your site for twenty-five thousand dollars, I'm guessing, based upon conversations we've had. I mean, you could, but then again, I'm also, to Mayor Boyle's point, when Raytheon opens up their project, and that gets built out, I would rather not see all of a sudden a, I guess, epicenter of art there, because we're letting the market drive it, and they have to do it on their properties, and it's required to that, because then you'll have, you know, a new, modern artistic sections of town, and then you'll have the old dreary, you know, buildings in town. So, uh, I think the threshold needs to go up. I think the cap can also go up, because the hundred thousand is ten million bucks. I mean, Sam, can you weigh in on Boeing's remodel on, uh, East Imperial? When they did that addition? You have a ballpark figure? It was probably costing more than ten million dollars to build that addition to that building, correct?
The wing, the extra wing.
That's okay. Um, I faintly remember that it did. But so I think if you create some sort of sliding scale of, um, lower, or raise the threshold, I think the threshold should be like two point five million dollars and up, or something that doesn't catch that, you know, single user in Smoky Hollow. And, cause that's the kinda, I, that's the kinda fee, that's like a parking and loo fee that then just chaps them from wanting to really be involved in anything else at the city. I mean, those are those small companies that we feel, we, we can get involved organically versus adding a fee to, whereas the big ticket items, two point five million or five million and up, that's fifty thousand, that's a hundred thousand for ten million, that's two hundred thousand for twenty million, that's the kinda money that can add up quickly. And with the development possibilities that we have, east of, you know, the highway, I don't wanna say it's Pulva, you know, Chris will mark me down. I think that's the fish we're going for. But I think a sliding scale, um, and something staff can put together, maybe then, and you guys can discuss it and bring it back, cause I would hate for us to figure out some sliding scale on the fly right now, after they've worked on this over time. But if, Sam, if you could look into all those projects and actually determine where it would be, or what would make sense, because to Carol's point, anything you build over ten million dollars, it's just a hundred grand. And so the person that's building ten million dollars hits that hundred grand, that person that just built, I mean, what are they talking about, investing at the driving range, the golf course? Forty million dollars?
Right.
Right? It's still a hundred thousand, or, versus four hundred thousand, right? So I think we're missing an opportunity there. I don't know.
Thank you, Councilman Nickel. I just, I don't understand why we wouldn't allow the developer to do what they want, you know, in terms of art.
They have the option to.
No, they don't. Only on the seven and a half million and plus, is that correct?
So, so a couple of things, and in terms of the last, last, uh, issue, we do not have an art department. Um, so part of it is the capacity of staff to work with developers on, on projects of the scale of five or ten or fifteen thousand dollars. Um, you know, is that really gonna add value to the, the developer and to the community with the smaller projects? Cause even seventy-five thousand, as you said, is not a huge budget for art. So, so that's, that's part of the, the reason there. And we also want to create a really, uh, vibrant culture development fund in order to do programming, but also to do public art beyond where the industry is. So we definitely wanna do things in Smoky Hollow and downtown and east of PCH, but we also wanna do it within civic facilities and within neighborhoods and within parks, um, throughout all of El Segundo. So that's why that cultural development fund pieces is so important in the, in loo fee. Um, as you saw with the different tiers, I think that's why sometimes they try to incentivize developers to, to pay into the fee by making that, you know, less than what it would be for developer project. But in our mind, uh, the cutoff was the seven and a half million to, to try to create some both in the fund and the developer projects. What I'm hearing from you is, is some of you think the threshold, uh, needs to be higher. I do think that the standard is probably gonna, gonna move towards seven hundred and fifty thousand. Um, a lot of the, the ordinances have been put in place, you know, years ago. Um, so, so there has been a, an increase in, in construction, so that would, seven fifty, I think, would, you know, you could definitely consider. Um, but remember, developers are doing projects in all of these communities, they're used to paying the five hundred thousand, so, um, so that, again, is part of our, our decision making. So it sounds like to me, you know, you could also, we, we can certainly come back with, with some other options. You could also think about a seven fifty and no cap, if you wanted to move forward tonight. Or a cap on remodel and not on new construction.
And, and intend no disrespect with this comment, but the, I should say, and, the cities that were used as reference points do not have good reputations from a business standpoint. Santa Monica, West Hollywood, uh, if you're a developer or you do business in those cities, they are incredibly difficult to do business in. And one thing that we've always strived to do is remain a business-friendly city. So fundamentally, I, I, obviously, I think it's obvious I take issue with this. I think we should allow the developer to either build their own art, maybe they have to spend more on that art, or pay the fee, so that you still get some of that fee. I just don't think it's fair to, um, assess a fee for arts on a developer. So, that's my point, thank you. But I think we belabored it, so why don't one of you make a recommendation on how we move forward?
Can, can I just ask one quick question on that? Did we look at, were there, were there any cities that, that we had even an anecdotal sense of, of the, the other ones around us, the Redondo's, Hawthorne's, Gardena's, if, if they do percent for arts, or, or any of those?
So, Redondo, yes. Manhattan Beach, yes. Inglewood, yes. Um, Hawthorne and Gardena, no, but they're part of, uh, counties, so they benefit from the civic percent for arts, um, in their civic projects. Um, but they don't have, have individual ones currently, is my understanding.
So, real quick, uh, Mark, at this juncture, do we have to actually come up with a specific, uh, fees, like as far as the, the seven, like if we raise it to from five hundred thousand to seven fifty, and the cap percentage, come up with the, the sliding scale, the cap, or can we approve it without, with, do we have to have everything really nailed down as far as specifics?
Yes, you do need the specifics, and what I'm hearing from the council is that there's not a majority of you that wanna move forward with this, and so...
Well, I mean, I, maybe we should just take a temperature gauge on who would like to move forward with coming up with a solution and having a arts fee first, and then we can go back and have Melissa spend the time on coming up with something that we actually all agree with. So can we take a, at least a, a lip to test on that?
Sure.
I mean, I would, I'm in for, I'm in favor of doing it.
I can support a fee in some capacity.
I would support a fee in some capacity.
I'm in favor.
Okay, so that means we, Andrew, you're against it?
Depends on how it comes back.
Okay.
No, that's...
That's true, that's fair, that's fair. Okay, so then can we give, um, Melissa some direction to come back with some, maybe looking at raising the baseline, and then looking at coming up at the, either a tiered cap, or, um, changing the cap so it doesn't hinder, or doesn't discourage people from doing model upgrades, like resurfacing of roads, or, um, putting a new roof on something, you know, something where it's, that we do, cause we obviously want people to continue to upgrade their properties, but we don't also want, you know, we don't want them to not do something because of a fee.
The other thing that I think we need to add in there is, um, you didn't wanna include it on residential, which I completely agree, but I think mixed use should be included, because there is a commercial component on that, unless you wanna try to do something very confusing.
Well, I think the, the commercial component is included, right?
Just the commercial for the mixed use.
Just the commercial portion, okay.
You know, and, and I also kinda like the idea of maybe just doing a nominal, you know, fifty dollars for every, anything below a certain amount, so that everybody has buy-in on this. Cause I think one of the things that we're trying to do here is, you know, brand ourselves as a, you know, a, of arts and friend, arts and culture community, and if everyone has buy-in to it, then they feel that they've, that they're part of the process. And, you know, a nominal hundred dollars for every project regard, under X amount of dollars, I think, is nothing.
Looks like we have consensus for you to go back, do you think, Melissa?
Maybe a little more direction would be, would be helpful. Um, and I, I would just say, we wanna, uh, because we wanna be business-friendly, and we want to limit the impact on the planning and, and building safety, I don't think we wanna get too complicated in, in, um, having, you know, multiple caps and tiers and, and different types of projects. So a little more direction about what, what you're comfortable with would be helpful if possible. Um, if not, yes, we will go back and, and give you some options.
Okay. Do you wanna?
I, I jotted down, um, different thresholds where the cap goes up by fifty thousand dollars. You know, ten to fifteen million is a hundred thousand dollars. Fifteen to twenty goes to, say like two, or you can break that up in the middle there if you want to. Um, and then twenty million plus, say the cap is two fifty. So the maximum that someone could incur, the maximum fee someone could incur is two hundred fifty thousand dollars, and that would be on any project of twenty million dollars plus. Or the one percent. So a twenty-one million dollar project would obviously be two hundred and ten thousand, right? That's just, I was just jotting down notes here.
Were you talking about raising the threshold, too?
Yes.
I think the threshold needs to be upwards of two and a half million to three million dollars. I think we, so it, yeah. Because you, you can't build anything for two million dollars.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so it's not so awkward for you. I think we, we have the gist of what you're trying to do. Let us work with the committee and try to be flexible and do a little bit more research and come back with the recommendation and some options for you.
Great, thank you.
Perfect.
All right, let's move on. Consent agenda, any? Oh, yeah, thank you. Well, let's see, where were you? Motion, we close public hearing?
Come back without posting a public notice again?
I assume you're going to need 60 to 90 days, or do you tell what, how much time you think needs to?
Well, I think we're really close. I think it's just a matter of coming up with.
We say 60 days, that gets us into the September meetings, doesn't it?
Yeah.
I think we're talking about 60 day continuation.
So that would be the second regular meeting in September?
And I do want to thank the Arts and Culture Committee, you know, Michael and the team have put, and Melissa have put a ton of time into this. And I'm just, to Ryan's point earlier, you know, I'm just really proud of and excited that, you know, here's people we've invited to help make change in our community and they're stepping up and doing it. And I'm just really excited that you guys are doing it and we will get this approved in some manner at some point.
All right, thank you, Mayor Potem. Consent agenda, any polls?
Number three.
Three, yep. We did.
Sorry, we moved nine and 10 above the consent.
We did them. We did them. We did them. We're on the consent agenda. Yeah.
Number four?
Yeah, number four, okay, thank you.
I'd just like to make a comment on five and seven. I don't need a presentation from staff. I just want to, just, just do a quick explication of where the money comes from and why we're doing it the way we are. So five and seven is just a poll, but no, no presentation needed. No, I'm not pulling six this time.
Five, you are pulling five and seven, Chris, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, five and seven, just to talk through it, so it's on the public, out there for people watching at home.
Any other polls? No, okay. Do we have a motion to approve items one, two, six, eight? That's a eight.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero, I believe, is that right? Yeah, okay.
Sorry, guys, I cannot hear out of my right ear.
Oh, it's all good.
You're astounded I'm not talking about the equipment purchase? Don't worry.
Item three. Consideration of possible action regarding approval of amendment to environmental assessment number EA 1154, amendment to specific plan number SP 16-01, amended and restated conditions of approval in the Second Amendment to Development Agreement number DA 16-01, amending the requirement that the developer provide six affordable units for low, very low, and extremely low qualified households within the residential development to increase the number of affordable units to eight and to allow the eight units to be purchased by qualified, moderate income households. An addendum, an addendum to the environmental impact report for the development project was certified by the City Council on September 28, 2016. Applicant, D.R. Horton, C.A. 2 Incorporated. Fiscal impact, as part of the proposed amendment, the developer has agreed to provide the city an additional 100,000 dollars for the city's costs of administering the program for two additional units. Don, you can thank me for reading that for you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. So you want to, you want to broach this one, Don?
Well, I just polled it so I could vote no on it and not vote no on the whole consent agenda. So I wanted to single it out. I think you know I don't believe the pathway that the council chose to follow at the last meeting was a sensible one. So I'll be consistent as usual and, and continue to vote no on this solution.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. Any other discussion on this one? No, okay. Do we have a motion to approve item three?
Hold it for public comment, I thought.
Oh, yeah, we have public comment. Sorry, Mr. Baldino, come on down.
Thank you, I'll be quick. Ryan Baldino, I live on Palm Street, I was on the Planning Commission. I'm not speaking on behalf of Planning Commissioner, I'm speaking as my day job as an attorney. At the last meeting, I met Ms. Rosemary Mesa for the first time. She was very distraught about what happened to her house during the construction process. And I went and looked at all the requirements and there was nothing there saying, if you mess up someone's house, you got to fix it before the city approves it. So I'm just trying to make a public statement that if anyone in town has an issue with D.R. Horton, they need to talk to an attorney. This city is not equipped to handle civil matters. And I just believe as far as my conversation with Mesa, she kind of had a misunderstanding about how she would be compensated for what she sees as the destruction of her home. So that's just kind of my public communication. Anyone else having issues, please go talk to an attorney immediately to know what your rights are. And I agree with Mr. Pimentel and Mr. Brand, you can't hold four for military. My wife's a Air Force brat, she moved every three years. I agree, it's going to be a de facto rental, but you've already had that conversation. So thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Baldino. Any other public communication on item three? Alrighty then. Oh, sorry. Yeah, please, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Darrell Secara, Director of Planning for D.R. Horton. I just wanted to reiterate, you know, our thanks and gratitude to city staff. We've, as you know, we've spent more than a year working on this affordable housing agreement. The staff has worked diligently, the staff's consultants, our own staff, our, our staff's consultants. So we, we're very pleased that we're finally at this point where we can get, move forward with the project and provide a affordable housing component to the city of El Segundo. So we just request that the council adopt the ordinance this evening and the amendment to the 540 Imperial Avenue specific plan. And if you have any further questions, myself and our consultants are here to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for D.R. Horton?
I have a question for Mark.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Councilman Nicol has a question for you, Mr. Hansley.
City cannot get involved in civil matters, correct?
Between two private property owners, no, the city does not get involved in those.
Okay, so help me understand or paint the picture for me if, you know, I'm a resident, I live on that block, and I'm in a dispute with a developer who has a relationship with the city. As a resident, you're thinking that the city's going to help you, or the city can help you, or the city will defend you because you're a resident of the city. But in fact.
No. Now, I will say that I think the city, when was alerted this, tried to encourage D.R. Horton to meet with people and, and see if they could resolve issues, but that's where it really stop, starts and ends with regard to what the city's authority is. We can encourage people to talk to one another, but we don't have any legal ability to withhold approvals for D.R. Horton's project until they pay private, or, or other property owners money. We legally can't do that.
So just fast forward so I can understand, so I don't find myself in this situation. Am I to believe that D.R. Horton can complete their project? You know, we compete, we complete this lottery, there's eight winners, certificate of occupancies are all done, the deal is all closed, they're gone out of town, and these civil matters could still be lingering?
Yes.
And they're not obligated in any way, shape, or form to deal with any, any of these civil matters unless these property owners actually take legal action against them?
Unless they do so voluntarily, as Mr. Baldino pointed out, if they think they have a legal, some sort of legal cause of action right against D.R. Horton, that, that's something they should look into immediately.
That's troubling.
The, the position that would put the city in, and legally for us to have two property owners and try to balance the rights of each and say, well, D.R. Horton, you caused damage to this property owner, and to get involved in that process, we don't really have any jurisdiction over that. So we, we just don't. We don't have the legal right to start weighing the rights of both property owners. I realize one's a resident, one's a developer, but they're both property owners. We just don't have a legal right to get involved in their dispute. That's just the way the law is written.
Do we have a legal right to continue this hearing?
Not for that purpose.
No further questions.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Anything else on item three? Dr. Brand's already stated he's a no vote. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item three. Do we have a second? I don't think we have a second. Do we have a second? No, going once, going twice. Nope. Okay. What's next on this one?
And the, this fails and the amend, the agreement will not be amended.
Okay, thank you. Item four, consideration of possible action regarding a request for an operation permit at 150 South Pacific Coast Highway for Bitcar, an automobile transportation service focused on serving travelers from China. EA 1251 and MISC 19-01, the project is categorically, categorically exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to 14 California Code of Regulations 15301 as a Class 1 categorical exemption existing facility, facilities. Applicant, George Kow, on behalf of Bitcar. And I think, Carol, you pulled this one, right?
Yeah, I pulled this one because I was talking to Carl Jacobson last night. And he thought that the ordinance for any type of limousine service required the cars to be undercover or into like a shed or garage. So I know that this area does not require that, and I just was curious, just, I was just going to ask that question.
You asked me that just an hour or so, a couple hours ago, and we looked at it since then and know there, we, we could find no such requirement.
You couldn't find anything, okay.
Well, not, it's not in the code anywhere, no.
Okay. I just was curious, because he brought it up and I just wanted to validate that.
Where is this, 150 PCH?
It's right next to the Lakes Golf Course and that's, that court, that property that's like a diagonal, like a triangle? Right on the, across the street from McDonald's and that Chevron station.
So there's, there's retail in there, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And one of the other concerns I had was with these, if they needed extra spaces, would they be parking the limousines or the cars in residential area? But there is really no residential area there, so that's.
They have an option to park more than the 11, right? They had an option to park more than the 11, I think I read, in the staff report. Add a further consideration?
Their request, their request identified 11, they actually have room for extra parking spaces, but their current request is at 11.
Yeah, they're what, 30%? They have a 130% of the amount of space they need, right? Yeah.
So what, what is the answer then? I missed that, on whether or not covered?
Covered is not required.
Okay, thanks. All right, Carol, do you want to move approval?
All right, so I'll move approval.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. Item five. Let's see, who's going to, who pulled that one?
Chris.
Chris, you get to read that one.
Sure. Consideration of possible action to adopt a resolution approving plans and specifications for construction of American with Disabilities Act compliant parking facilities. Improvements for the Community Development Block Grant, project number PW 19-Tech 28. Parking lot location, City Hall Employee Lot, Fire Station Number Two Employee Parking Lot, City Hall Public Parking, Fire Station Number One Employee Parking Lot, Jocelyn Center Public Parking Lot, Gordon Clubhouse Public Parking, and El Segundo Public Library Parking. The reason I wanted to pull this is to, to let people know, we talk a lot about, and subsequent also on number seven, about where our property taxes go. And the 93 and a half percent that go to the county and state. This is an example of how we actually get some of that money back to the city of El Segundo. So when people see the city's fronting 93,000 dollars worth of improvements, that grant gets reimbursed by the county. And I think that it's, it's one of those nice things that is not a general fund expenditure, that is somewhere where your property taxes to the county actually come back. Likewise, I'll just sneak in, the, the plug for seven, is where we do the same thing only with state funding out of the bond for parks. The idea that we can use state money for Acacia Pool as opposed to a general fund expenditure. So with that, I guess maybe, I, I, do I have to read seven if I, if I go there? I mean, it's, it's the same, you just, I think it's important that people out there know that this is where your taxes go.
I'll probably, I'll read seven. How's that, Chris? Because I have a comment on seven. Do you want to first move approval of five, though?
I would like to move approval of five.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five, zero. Seven, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the submittal of an application for competitive grant funds through the statewide park development and community revitalization program, Prop 68, for the Acacia Park and Pool Project, 600 block of West Acacia, fiscal impact none. I just want to reiterate my stance that I think it is not fiduciarily responsible to build another pool right now. We've already got four pools, or soon to be when we build, rebuild the, the plunge. And this pool, once we rebuild it and we come up with a 1.3 million or whatever it is after we rebuild the pool, will require, I'm guessing, 100,000 dollars at least annually to run. And as we all know, we are looking down the barrel of a structural deficit in the next 18 months. So I'm just going to reiterate my no stance on rebuilding the pool at Acacia. Having said that, does someone want to make move approval on that one?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm a no. All right, we got through nine and 10. Now we're on, we're going to combine items 11 and 13. 11 is police recruitment, marketing campaign update, and then we're going to go right into the 2019 mid-year crime summary report.
All right, good evening, Mayor, council. I've been here two years now. So two years ago when I started, shortly after that, we dropped to our lowest recorded number of sworn personnel to 48. That's down from 62, which is our fully authorized strength. That was a pretty big problem. And it was one that was, that you obviously were aware of, one that I was aware of, and we, we took a lot of steps to peel back the layer on that. We wanted to improve the efficiency of the process, so we got quality people at the back end. We hired a contract human resource analyst to help us free up the pipeline. We looked at our discretionary portions of the testing in an effort to change those around so that it helps speed things up. We, with your support, we expanded our cadet program to try to get that farm league up and running, and in fact, our next academy. We have two of our cadets who'll be going to the academy, that's, that's working out really well. And lastly, we wanted to focus on hiring lateral police officers. We know that 40% of our strength will be retiring in the next four years. And so in order to replace that, that drain of talent out the back door, we need to bring experienced police officers in. And with your support, last year we had the implementation of a lateral hiring bonus, and we hired a marketing firm to help us get our message out. We contracted with Ignited in November. They went live in April, and tonight they're going to give you a presentation of the first three months of the campaign, what the data has shown is going on. I can tell you from the output or the end product standpoint, we, as of today, are at 59 sworn. We'll have another person coming on board by the end of the month. I'll forget about the fact that somebody's retiring this week. So I'll just hold on to that 59 sworn number because that's a, that's a record. We haven't been that high since I've been here. I'm really happy about that. And this week we brought on board our second lateral police officer. So I'll be introducing that person to you guys at a council meeting coming up. But that's two laterals that we've gotten and not having one since 2011. So anecdotally at least, I think that this combined effort that we're doing is really working and we're staying relevant and our name's out there throughout the state. So with that, I'll bring up, brief from Ignited to talk more.
Thank you so much, Mayor Boils and council. Oh, thank you. Thanks for having me back. Last time I was here, it was mid-March, and I shared with you the creative that we did, and we launched it in April. As the chief mentioned, we're going to take you through some of the data today. I'm also here with my colleague, Erin Duss. So very quickly, we'll do a campaign overview, talk through performance, and then learnings and recommendations. So our objective was to attract lateral officers to submit applications and join the SPD. And our key performance indicators was driving traffic to the landing page, the apply now clicks, and application submissions. This is our executive summary, the exciting page, and the subsequent pages will actually dive into these numbers. But overall, so far in the first three months, the campaign has driven a 430% lift in monthly average applications. It's garnered rounding up 53,000 clicks to the landing page, 16,000 clicks to apply now, 5.5 million impressions, and 309,000 video views. And we're seeing that our approach of deploying multi-channel, multi- And we're seeing that our approach of deploying multi-channel, multi-partner is really the right thing to do because rather than setting the media up and just letting it do what it wants to do, we're actively in there optimizing, we optimize by audience, we optimize by channel, by creative, et cetera. As a reminder, here's some of the creative we did. We had display, we had social media, we had an out-of-home board, we had our video with Luke and Luke. As a reminding for the planning parameters, we had a net media budget of 74,000, and our timing was April to November. This was on purpose to follow peak recruiting seasons, so as I mentioned, we launched in April and we are up for three months. We're currently in a dark period, other than search, while people are vacationing. And then we'll come back in on August and be live through October.
Thank you. Members of council, thank you for your time. So as we mentioned, you know, one of the things we wanted to look at was not only is, how is the campaign performing, but where exactly is it performing and how do we optimize it? For us, efficiencies wasn't just in what happened in the first three months, but actually, once the hiatus is over, how do we continue that momentum? As the chief mentioned, we have a couple. We want to continue to gain more, more support, more variables. So to do so, you can see, prior to the launch of the campaign, there were 10 applications between July and December. Between January, March, there was 13, not bad. However, once we launched the campaign, we saw a significant growth in that, that 430% that Bree had mentioned. And we see that that cumulative effect has happened across all of the significant platforms that we were on. So it'd be an anomaly to think that if it happened on one platform, say Google or Indeed, but we see it across all of the platforms, which tells us that the creative was sound, the messaging to the key audiences of lateral officers resonated to them, along with the bonus that you guys approved last year, really helped to create a holistic program that drove 71 people to begin to apply, so pretty significant. From a pure metrics perspective, we wanted to look at exactly the conversion rate on it. When you look at, and you see a piece of social out in the world, how did it actually drive? So we saw a 5.5 million impressions. Now, we had some benchmarks that were given to us by our media partners, and you could see that this was 34% higher than the planned impressions. Again, reinforcing the fact that it was over and beyond the officers or lateral officers that we expected to see this, that actually saw that and resonated to the message. Furthermore, there was 309,000 video views. Now, this video view is reflective of those who've seen it at 15 seconds or longer. When we looked at a total video completion of our 60-second video, there was a 25.7% video completion rate. Again, significantly higher, at 139% higher than our planned video views. So as part of this optimization, as we go forward out of hiatus, we're gonna continue to optimize and track that to see can we sustain this level of effort, based on the geographies that we showed earlier in our planning parameters. If we're so lucky to continue this project, we will look at additional geographies, additional audiences to continue our message through. We looked at the media effectiveness once onsite, so this is, you've seen something in social media, you hit the Apply Now button and it drives you to a site. We see a 52.8,000 clicks of the website. Again, pretty impressive, but more so when you look at, actually, what is that click-through rate, at 1.27%? And you may not think that's a lot, but at 285 times higher than what is actually predicted, that is significant. And we think that that's something, as a momentum that we want to continue to drive, continue to optimize as we go forward, both in terms of our messaging, creative output, and actually some of the communications that we get to people once they go from the site to the NeoGov site. Because we've recognized in the past that there was some barrier of entry of the multiple sites and multiple application process. So by creating the site, we wanted to simplify it, and we saw that we were able to then have a 4.42% conversion rate. So again, 30% higher than expected, which is pretty good for a site that at times has some links to it. On top of that, we wanted to look at what are some of the social conversation that's going on within the space. And so we did a sentiment analysis, which is basically looking at the positive, neutral, and negative conversations that's happening. And 80% of the conversations out there within the social sphere were positive. We looked at what were they actually saying, they wanted to know what is the application process in terms of time, the ease of use, and actually overall interest. Our simple takeaway on that is that the city is getting noticed. The virality or social impact that's happening out there is at a rate that we haven't seen from a recruiting campaign, let alone, let alone an officer campaign. In our first presentation, you may have seen some of our earlier work, we showed a sea of sameness that happened in the police academies and organizations. For sure, this department is standing out. So some of our learning and recommendations, we want to continue with the multi-channel form of effectiveness as we looked at both our programmatic, our paid social, and our paid search, allowed us to be able to get to the right people at the right times at a volume that we were very happy with. Again, you see that middle band across all three forms of media placements hitting them where we intended to hit them. Lastly, you know, we don't think that we're just helping to create a campaign, we're helping to help to create a brand by reinforcing that ESPD is something, and our uniquely ESPD is more than just the El Segundo Police Department. But much like the LAPD has branded themselves, we think there's a great opportunity for the El Segundo Police Department to do the same. So we continued that momentum, and you see on the chart on the right, the 137% lift is really just a significant impact in terms of when our campaign was lined to the volume that we were able to look at. Lastly, one of the things that we want to reinforce is the amount of buzz that's happening amongst other police departments. We've managed to been able to garner a 25% lift in share from other local police departments, particularly amongst LAPD and Riverside, so those who work in those PDs are interested in being able to come over to El Segundo. So we see that hiring is definitely on the rise amongst very specific and targeted police departments that we wanted to go after. So lastly, we knew that we wanted to be able to test a couple different partnerships from our media deployment perspective, and we saw that of the three that we've done, Sabio has largely blew the others out of the dust in terms of the effect of in-app communications to be able to drive someone to go to apply, to see a social post, to then drive to a site. So much so that we've actually going to discontinue the other two partnerships after the hiatus, reinvest that money back into Sabio, and allow us to be able to have even more targeted communications in-app going forward. So lastly, what we've been able to achieve in the first three months of this is we've been able to optimize our budget by taking things that aren't performing or underperforming and put it towards things that are performing extremely well. From an audience perspective, we've been able to identify who are the key lateral officers that we want to go for in the police departments that they are, and be able to engage with them via social communications to be able to help to attract them because we knew that a one-touch communication wasn't gonna be enough, that we had to put the communications out there and reinforce that. And lastly, that our creative has been powerful enough to be able to differentiate itself in a sea of sameness of other police departments. So in closing, we want to continue with the buzz and conversations that's going on, continue to utilize a multi-channel, multifaceted approach to be able to encourage other lateral officers and other police departments to join the El Segundo Police Department. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Really impressive results, thank you very much.
Thank you, we'd love to come back in three months and we'll share the wrap-up.
Excellent, excellent, thank you. Thank you, thank you, chief. And chief, I think you're gonna go right into item 13, right?
Yes, Mayor.
Chief, before we jump to that, do we anticipate, given the turnover in the next four years, that you will be looking at six officers a year, that you're trying to, do you have a recruitment goal for, for the next fiscal year that we should be bearing in mind?
So I do have a very robust presentation on that, that I was gonna bring back to council in about another month or so, and talk a little bit about the demographics of our workforce and distribution tables and some standard deviation and...
Good, lots of equipment, bring equipment with you. Lots of equipment.
Couple, couple new SWAT trucks and... All right, well, I have, I'm here to report on our six-month UCR crime data. Just as a brief reminder, it is reported out to you on a regular basis through our KPIs. At the end of last year, I gave a fairly robust presentation on what the year-end was, and so this will be a less detailed presentation, but again, a little more robust in what you get on your KPIs and an opportunity to answer any questions that you might have for me. Because of our technological challenges over the last few days, I'm actually going old-school. I was gonna get an overhead projector and put it up, but I couldn't find one in the closet, so I'm actually just going to go off my notes. But for point of reference, it's largely the chart that you have in your council packet is what I'm gonna be referring to, so. I'm happy to report, and again, I want to start by, and I know I've said this to all of you and to the chagrin, I guess, of some, but we're very, we have very low crime here, very, very low crime, especially when you talk about violent crime. And so I talk about these numbers, but the numbers are so low that I will throw the caveat out there that something could happen in the next six months to swing our year-end results. But we are an incredibly safe community, I am happy to report that. And I am very happy to say that overall, we're down 13% in our Part 1 crimes at the six-month mark. I'm very, very happy with that. I'm gonna talk about violent crimes in a little bit, and I have to pause on violent crimes, not because there's very many, in fact, there's hardly any at all, but just because of the fact that the FBI put the name violent in there, it tends to evoke a somewhat emotional response from people, so I am gonna discuss those in brief. But if you just take a look, our anti-violent crime shows up 117%, but that's only 21 more instances of crime that we capture in those categories, while our property crime has decreased 20% or 69 less instances of six months prior. And I'm gonna take you, before I get into the details, just down, we did a six-month average. And I asked for six months because in 2014, Prop 47 was approved by the voters, and it was an ordinance or a law that took effect immediately. And if you look at our 2015 numbers, immediately after Prop 47, you start to see that where crime goes up. And myself and other chiefs submit that Prop 47 has a direct impact on crime rates. What I'm especially happy about with our six-month average is we didn't just regress down to the mean, we actually went down below it. The six-month mean of Part 1 crimes at the six-month mark is 348, and at 323, we're about 7% below the average for the last six years. And in fact, we're dipping right back down to where we were at pre-Prop 47 levels. So I think these are, these are really significant numbers, and I think they're really good. You know, if you live by decreases, you live by increases, but I think that the programs and plans that we put into place are having an impact on what's going on out there. So to talk a little bit about our violent crimes, you'll see that our rapes increased by two. We only had three total. Two of those were statutorily defined as rape, meaning that the people at the time the incident occurred were under the age of 18, so we have to classify that as a rape. One of those, and then the other one involved a victim and suspect who were known to each other. And this is kind of a common theme that I'm gonna get at on here. I think maybe of our 39 instances of violent crime, there was probably three where the victim and suspect did not know each other. So if you take three people who were victimized by crime out of almost 17,000 people in this community, it's a very, very low instance of violent crime, and that's not counting our daytime population of nearly 80,000 people. Our robberies have increased. Those are primarily what we call SD's robberies, or these are robberies that start off as shoplifts, and then the store clerk gets in the way and gets shoved out of the way, and because of that, it gets elevated to a robbery. These aren't coming in with guns and stick 'em up or anything like that. These are the push and shoves, and the, and the robbers run out the door. These are primarily booster crews out of the Los Angeles area, and as I mentioned, at the end of last year, a lot of the LA-area gangs have gone towards committing these types of crime. It's easier, it's more profitable, and so we're continuing to work on that. And in fact, we are, probably in August, we will have the ability with our staffing to put our officer on the LA Crime Impact Team, and it's a team that's specifically designed to target Part 1 crimes, such as these booster crews. Moving down, our aggravated assaults are up. Almost all our aggravated assaults are domestic violence instances. So again, victim, suspect, known to each other. There was, there was three on there that were, happened to do with bar fights or things along those lines. And with our aggravated assaults, we have an 86% clearance rate on that, so we've submitted for prosecution on nearly all of them. We had great declines in both burglaries and our overall thefts, which is outstanding, I'm very happy to see that. I pulled, I did want to pull something I know is of importance to all of you, and that's homelessness. So I had our stats pulled for our calls for service related to homeless and our arrests related to homeless. Now, it's not a perfect science, because the call might come out as something different. We do rely on the officers coding it a certain way, and I think for the most part, they do. But last year, at this time, we had 195 calls for service related to homeless. This year, we had 90, so a very significant decrease of 105, 54%. And then last year, we had 50 arrests related to homeless individuals, this year we had 29, or a decrease of 21. So also, I think the great work that our community lead officers are doing out there is having an impact. So that concludes my presentation, I'm available for any questions.
Just real quick on the homeless, do you think the calls, though, are down because people are becoming immune to them?
I have nothing to support that, no, I don't think so. We're still, plenty of people are calling whenever they see somebody, so. We don't have a tremendous number of homeless people in the community, but when they're out, they stand out.
Chief, do you have a sense of, are there any geographic concentrations in this, for this half-month, or this half-year report? Do you see these centering around hotels and apartments like we saw last year, a lot of the violent incidents?
So, no, the, because this year, the aggravated assaults are more domestic violence, and so they are actually more scattered throughout the residential area. We haven't noticed where these are trending more at the hotels like they, we saw at year-end. I mean, again, very low numbers, that could certainly change by the time that we, when I'm presenting to you in six months from now.
And then, I know that you, your team has been really partnering with businesses and being proactive and, you know, working with them and ensuring that, like retailers, working sure with them that, you know, they have a contact in you and within the police department, and they're, you guys are working with them on ensuring that their places of business are secure, correct? I know that...
Yes, absolutely correct. I think it's important, at least, to remind the community that we do have two area lieutenants. We have Lieutenant Perez who has the east side of town, east of Pacifico's Highway, and Lieutenant Corkins who's on the west side, both their contact information's on our website. And they are really that portal to the police department, and they go out proactively and make contact with businesses. And then on top of that, we have our community engagement division where the community lead officers fall under, and they are our primary Part 1 crime people that target that within the police department. So between all of them, they go out and regularly make contact, and our crime analyst then pushes that information out. Here's what I'm seeing, here's trends I'm hearing from other crime analysts in the region. This is an area where we should focus our efforts.
And then also, I know last year you had mentioned that a lot of the crime was coming from the storage unit, the storage businesses. Is that calmed down, or is that still a problem?
That has calmed down significantly.
Okay. And then last but not least, I know that you have more cadets, is our issuance of parking tickets gone up? Or where are we with enforcing our parking on Main Street? I know that there's a lot of additional traffic, and I know there's always been complaints from businesses where people park beyond the two-hour time zone. I just was curious if we've been issuing parking tickets and how that's been going.
If you'll bear with me for just a second, I could probably find that for you, I didn't have it prepared to present.
I paid a ticket last week.
Did you?
Yeah, a little civic donation.
I will say, as part of the success of us hiring our cadets as police officers, we're going to have probably overall less cadets this year than we had before. I don't think I'm gonna have it by parking site. I don't have specifically how many parking sites we've had, six-month to date, I apologize.
That's okay, I was just curious, and then do we, are we, and you may not have this yet, but has the calls gone up on people calling for people who are staying 72 hours on their streets as far as people parking using Uber for the airport? I mean, are we getting, how's that been?
There's no, that is not on the radar screen.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, done.
We're back ticketing now when people violate the no-parking, street-sweeping signs. I know we had a grace period there, but just from watching my street, it looks like we're writing those citations again.
Was that what Ted?
So we do...
Mr. Nippon can attest to that they are.
There was a brief grace period during the transition. I think what's important for the community to know is we do get calls sometimes, it's, hey, I saw a car parked on the street, and the street sweeper and no ticket and everything. We don't just blanketly ticket if you're in violation of the sign, we actually follow a sweeper. And if the sweeper has to go around a car, you get a ticket. But you could very well, once the sweeper goes by, pull your car and park, and we're not gonna cite it. We don't really feel like that's the spirit of the law and why it exists. The idea is just to have cars out of the way as sweeper. So I know we do get calls sometimes from people who say, hey, wait a minute, I didn't, you know, there's cars parked there, nobody ticketed it, and it's because it wasn't blocking the sweeper when it came through.
Right. And then there's a lot of work being done to the streets out there, and in many cases, we haven't got the restraining lines repainted. And without them, it's a little scary driving out there, because people don't seem to see the stop signs as well without the restraining lines. It looked like we tried to partially remedy that by putting up sawhorses with stop signs kind of low, but I'm seeing people blow through these stop signs where we haven't replaced the restraining lines all the time. And imagine that happens all over the country, but if we can get those lines painted back, be a little safer out there for those of us trying to navigate. I know that's not your department, but have you written a lot of tickets or had accidents because of that?
Not that I'm aware of, but I can, I can check with our traffic division. Not that I'm aware of, but I can, I can check with our traffic division and see.
It's okay. I just hope everybody is safe.
Okay. Anything else for chief? Thank you, sir. Great progress. All right, moving on to item twelve. Consideration and possible action to announce an appointment to the Recreation and Parks Commission. Fiscal impact none. We're excited to reappoint an incumbent, Lee Davis, and appoint a new face, Kelly Watson, who's been very involved in the community in soccer and many other recreation and parks endeavors, so they'll be starting shortly. And let's see, report, city clerk.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. City treasurer. I don't see anyone from that office. City attorney.
Yes, council, our mayor and council today. My office appeared in the airport courthouse with regard to the 416 Virginia Street property. There was a criminal misdemeanor case that was proceeding to trial. Property owner pled no contest to two of the counts and is going to be in a compliance diversion program for twelve months, must comply with all of our municipal code sections, and is under a requirement to evict the tenant that's in the, living in the garage, and was required to pay the seventy-five-hundred dollars that are in outstanding fines, and will essentially be under probation during this time period. If there's any further violations, will be immediately subject to court enforcement. So I wanted to make that publicly stated. The tenant will go to trial in August seventh, unless some arrangement is made before then. Thank you.
Mark, is that something we can get out, is maybe Sam's department, or maybe it's been code enforcement, I can't recall?
Well, we will alert the, we were working with the residents as witnesses, and we will alert those, all of those people.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. I lost my, here we go. City manager. Oh, do you want to go last, Scott? We talked about that earlier.
Yeah, I like to do cleanup if I may.
Sure. Okay. City council members. Councilmember Pimentel.
Nothing to add.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Nicol.
I just want to commend the city on another wonderful Fourth of July celebration. Recreation and Parks, you guys did a phenomenal job from the beginning of the day till the end. And whoever's idea it was to cut the grass really, really low was genius. I got there that morning and thought, you know, I am so proud of our staff, like this is awesome. So whoever's idea it was, please pat them on the back, that was great. Mayor Boils and I finished third place in the water balloon toss, right? Roughly third.
Yeah, I dropped the ball.
But I wanted to, I want to thank all the community groups that came out, that had their tents up, that were selling food and drinks, and Bill Ruane was one of the main sponsors, he was handing out beach balls, and the kids were running around having a blast, and the Parks employee that was emceeing, all of the fun that was being had on the field was great. And Chris and Dawn, I just have to tell you, you missed Carol in the Qantas Club pie-eating contest. She gave Drew and I a run for our money. And we all decided, Chris, when it was all said and done, that we were really happy that you weren't there competing, because then that gave us a chance to win. But the Qantas Club and the Rotary Club were out there doing their pie-eating contests and watermelon eating contests, and just seeing the community out there doing, you know, the things that we did when we were kids, it's, it's just quintessential El Segundo. It's all about that character that we want to, you know, hold on to and protect. So thank you, Meredith, and your staff, you did a great job.
Thank you, councilmember Nicol. Councilmember Bran.
Yes, I'd like to officially welcome our new city manager. This is the first meeting, and was glad to see you on July fourth, and showing up there, and being visible in the community. That was a great way to start. I'd like to give a shout-out to the main sponsor, Chevron, like every year, and Bill Ruane for the fireworks show and other things related to the event. Really another fun day in El Segundo on America's birthday. It's great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Protem Perstuck.
Yeah, I'd like to give a shout-out to Dr. Dom Bran for our lovely Hawaiian shirts here, getting us in the mood of casual summers. And I also want to thank for the Parks and Recs for wonderful Fourth of July, but I also also want to thank them for hosting all the camps. You see all the kids around town, you know, keeping our kids busy is very important. And I just want to encourage everyone to take the beach shuttle so they can avoid the parking down at the beach. We, the Parks and Recs is offering the free shuttle, so please make sure you're taking those. And that we do have the art walk this Thursday, so please, it will be a great night out. And also, I do want to say, you know, the concerts, the concerts in the park have been very well attended, and I think everyone's keeping the new ordinance of alcohol pretty at a, very calm, so I think we did a good job there. I also, at this time, though, want to thank the police department. I know we had a tragedy in town with one of our families, and we want to, I just want to recognize the police department for playing a key role in being a liaison to the Luwak family, and at this time, we would like to take a moment of silence for Mackenzie Luwak and wish her family all the best, and send hugs and love.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I have nothing to add, you guys all covered it. Thank you very much. Public communications, now is the time and place. Oh, sorry. See, see what happens, we got an order. Okay, you're up, Mr. Mitnick.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council? Well, I guess I'm fitting right in if you overlook me. So, thank you. It is indeed an honor and a privilege to be here, to be serving as your city manager. Before I give the city manager comments, it was also a thrill to be there for the Fourth of July celebration, and I was impressed by the five-year-old El Segundo resident who sung the national anthem. That was really impressive. I recorded that, by the way, so that was really nice. So by way of follow-up, we will, I think our deputy city manager's already followed up with one of the speakers, so those folks who raised issues, we'll be sure to follow up with them. So by way of upcoming items for the council, you have a meeting in about twelve hours exactly. You have a study session on the budget, this would be your second study session, eight AM in this room. That will not be broadcast live, but it will be recorded and then replayed as necessary and available to the public. So for that agenda, as I understand it, we will continue the overview of your, of city departments. We have two departments to go over, planning and building, building safety, as well as public works. And then we'll go over the proposed capital improvement program, update on your strategic plan, and that'll be really about it, and some other components. And then we'll come back to you with the budget at a later date. Then your, as far as upcoming items, your next regular city council meeting, that next meeting will be on August sixth, and we will have some items of interest, the Beach Cities Media Campus Project that was continued, that'll come back hopefully at that meeting. Short-term rentals, we had a speaker speak about that, well, there'll be a hearing on that item, scheduled here on the sixth. The wireless antennas in the public right-of-way, that'll be a hearing on that as well. And then the sidewalk policy update, at least according to the forecast that I have. And as I mentioned to council members, we're working with the city clerk's office to fine-tune our city council agenda forecast document, where we have a more comprehensive, longer-term document, so you can see what's in the pipeline. My role will be to provide you in the public an update on the key items coming up. I think that's it for that. I believe I had one other item. And again, just as a heads-up for members of the community, from July eighteenth through the twenty-fourth, slurry seal resurfacing and temporary street closures will take place, and members of the public can go to the website and find out where they are.